Six thirty, so let's open the May ninth meeting. May ninth, twenty twenty-three, meeting on the Rattlin Planning Board. First order with minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of April twenty-fifth. I'll make the motion.
Second?
But I have to say I wasn't here for everything, because I left.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
And I did note that on there, Dave.
You did, yes.
Yep, I saw that.
Okay, yep. So I don't know if I should, supposed to was abstain?
No, you don't have to abstain, because you were here for a good portion of it.
Yeah.
Didn't have any.
The only comment I was gonna say is, under the zoning amendment articles, technical corrections. Excellent job, Dave. No major questions, everything went through. Boom!
Yep, it was good, I appreciate that.
Yeah, that, uh...
Appreciate the board's work as well to move these along.
Oh, yeah.
By law subcommittee and also at the...
Although, I would say thirty percent or thirty-five percent of everybody left right before we got to the technical. They all walked out the door, and I'm going like, "Stay to the end, please." Still went through. That was it for me, I didn't have anything else.
No further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Carrie's? Next, on the docket is Board of Reorganization. And welcome to members. Welcome.
Yeah, nice to meet everyone. We sort of met everyone before at some point, yep.
Yeah.
Wish I was still coming there, but thanks to Eversource, I have to go to CVS.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they come in and get everybody, you know, eventually.
Unfortunately.
Yeah. Well, need an emergency, come on down, you know, that's what we're there for.
I shall.
I make a motion that we keep the, um... The reappointment, like their old Norm as chair, yours vice chair.
And you as CMRPC rep?
That's, yeah.
So moved.
That was the next one, but yeah, or someplace down the road, yes. I'm already on it, been voted.
Do that as a separate motions.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask if they could do it separately.
I would recommend doing that as a separate motion, just because they're really two separate pieces of business.
The CMRPC meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so for the first part of the motion?
Was?
You made a motion?
To, uh, keep it the same. Norm has the chair, and Tim has the vice.
Do I have a second?
Guess I'll second myself.
There you go.
Is there any discussion?
On something like this, you have the opportunity.
Um, I don't think I know of anything to discuss for that, so. Team's okay with me, you know. You guys do a good job, so.
We try.
We're trying, yep.
Yeah.
Okay, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Make a sub-note to that, if Hilltop comes up again, I do not want to be, I'm kidding.
You're stuck with it, you're stuck with it.
Come on, Julian, throw something at me about Hilltop.
The idea was resubmitted.
Yeah, it has been.
Great. Kevin busy again.
Already done, everything.
I was gonna say, hold on.
Kevin just had to go, he had two things he had to re-look at, and that was it. Minimal stuff he had to look at.
Minimal stuff.
Okay, then, motion to appoint Dick Williams as CMRPC rep?
So moved.
Second, second that. That's a good idea, yep.
Any discussion? He's, he's Mr. CMRPC.
I think he is, yeah. Thank you, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carrie's?
Okay, so where was my, is, am I with the select board, Dick? Is that my?
Yes, okay.
So I gotta talk to whoever, they didn't reorganize tonight, because they canceled, so... Um, I'll have to wait and see who their chairman is to talk to and to make sure. If they wanna, want me a letter from me for re- reappointment or whatever they need, I'll ask. I'm not sure.
Yeah, so I'm working on the reappointments right now. Is, is the alternate and annual appointment?
I don't know. I know I did it late, because I did it halfway through the year.
Yep, so we did recently do it, but Dave, is that a?
I believe it is.
Okay, so I'll just add you to my list.
Okay.
Um, so if you, if the chair, um, Norm can just provide a...
See, I'm sorry to interrupt. There's no planning board involvement, because it's, it's the select board's appointment purely. It's not an appointment of the planning, it doesn't need a recommendation from the planning board, it's their appointment.
I volunteered to make it to do it, so...
They're comfortable with their appointments.
I just wanted to find if their chairman wants me to send a letter, or wants, what does they want me to do, because I can do either.
Um, because they like to have a letter that goes along with all of the appointments.
I'll pull the letter out.
No recommendation necessary from this board for that position, because it's their appointment exclusively.
Wait, but if Tim can just write his letter of interest, just to say that he would like to continue?
Alright, I'll do that, I'll get that, I'll get that to you. I'll send it to an email.
Okay, excellent.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, number four, appointment to the planning board bylaw subcommittee for Marilyn Sodody, Mad Life member.
Also moved.
I'll second that, because she, her and Tim Gibbons are, worth their weight in gold. You haven't met them, I can keep it there. Tim Gibbons is, I think, our only at-large member. We used to have a few.
Yep.
And Bonnie Bessie was really good, but she moved out of town, and, uh...
Okay, yeah.
And Marilyn, of course, was in your position, and, uh...
Yep.
Her knowledge on marijuana and bylaws, she's been, she was integral in getting the, this last one through at the town meeting with, uh... Getting our, uh, home occupancy cleaned up, because it was, it was pretty, in my mind, it was good from when it was done, but it was a little loosey-goosey.
Yeah.
Her and Dave did a great job of getting that cleaned up, so.
Oh, cool.
I think she's valuable, that's my opinion.
Yep.
So moved.
I did.
Oh.
Yep, you already motioned and seconded.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, uh, i- in the way of discussion on this, the only thing that, uh, I'm having a little bit of a problem with is, uh, her holding the position of chairman, of chairperson.
Well, we'll decide that when we have our next...
Suppose we can do that at the next bylaw subcommittee meeting, yeah. Just thinking that...
No, yeah.
Since it's a planning board subcommittee, it seems as though the chair should be a planning board member. I do not want it, by the way. I do not want the chair, that one, at all.
Because, yes. And if you didn't know, you're a de facto member.
Okay.
Yeah.
You can come to all of them, any of them, none of them, whatever you want to do.
Yeah.
We already discussed that.
Oh, okay, sorry.
We went, we went through the whole thing.
Alright, I'll shut up then.
No, you're good.
I didn't know what you guys went through.
No, well, thank you.
You know, if you come up with something, fill it in, because we might have missed it.
Yeah.
Alright, good enough.
Okay, uh, with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Again, fantastic. Okay, we are back to fifty-seven Maple Ave. And we do have a correspondence from Town Council, uh, on this one. And I don't think I'm gonna read the whole thing here, but read some parts of it. Question was, is the existence of the second dwelling built in nineteen fifty on the lot? Uh, shown on Lot Three, the proposed by insufficient evidence to show that the right-of-way existed before nineteen fifty-four. Uh, it says, "In my opinion, Lot Three could have been accessed by a driveway in a different location and not a right-of-way, and therefore, in its, in my further opinion, the existence of the second build, dwelling built in nineteen fifty on Lot Three is not sufficient evidence to show that the right-of-way existed before nineteen fifty-four."
Okay, that's, that's magic. That's alright.
Question here was, "Some of the materials refer to claim frontage as an easement, and some materials refer to it as a right-of-way. What's the difference?", blah blah. Uh, and it says, "An easement is a legal agreement between lots and individual to use your property in some way. A right-of-way is a type of easement. It gives a specific, specific individual or group of people a right-of-way to cross the property." Next part is, it says, "Assuming they, that the claim frontage is somehow valid, is the zoning district boundary shown on the plan used correctly to determine the required area of the lots? With regard to an ANR, the planning board only needs to determine if there is an appropriate amount of frontage, and if the frontage is adequate. Uh, the building department determines if the lot area is correct when issuing a building permit." And then she goes on to quote the zoning district bylaws. I really kinda think that's it. That's just the email from him. Yeah, that's just from Dave, yep. That's kinda it. So... I... At least my, my reading of it is that she does not feel that the ANR is, uh...
It's not endorseable.
Yeah, it, it, it has not shown the necessary, uh, just...
But she says, if, if I'm reading this right, if more information can be provided...
Well, yeah, and I'm assuming that more information would have to be...
It's from the applicant, I get that, but...
From the applicant, some kind of a document.
Don't know what else to give you guys. The road's been there forever, way before my time, before Eddie's time. We proved the buildings were there before nineteen fifty-four.
Yeah.
They didn't come in in helicopters. Did they, did they quote something from Antucket? Usually she throws an Antucket reference.
No, 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 no.
That's not allowed in the Antucket either.
No.
I don't know what to tell you. Uh, there's a lot of people using that road that may not be using that anymore, because if he can't use it for, for that purpose, why would he let anybody else use it?
Yeah.
That'd be a whole other... Beehive. I don't think they're asking for anything out of scope with the neighborhood. Um, it's a private road, maintained privately. It's been maintained for, since nineteen fifty, and more so lately, because of all the Bonnie's project behind it. I mean, there was a whole discussion, and this is with the ZBA, of eliminating that whole turnaround that was at the end of this, because this is used for that same purpose. Why have that? So, I, I can see the, the opinion, but it's only an opinion. I think you guys are the deciding factor on... Is this in harmony of the neighborhood? Of course it is.
Lots.
I'm torn.
I wanna see a little bit more evidence.
See, the, the only evidence that I can think of...
We've got everything we could possibly get.
It would have to be some sort of a map showing that thing as a right-of-way.
Or overhead pictures.
Well, we have a USGS map from...
I know what you're, USGS, but that's not what I was referring to.
But that's the only, I mean, that was done in, I think it was dated nineteen fifty-five, and it shows that little leg going in, in the trailer park, but I, we've looked everywhere that we could find, and we, we are, we're making the...
An RCS.
A assumption of...
Through, through the chair, Julian, did they get, did they get any, and I know there's a cost involved, any attorney to come up with a comment on the deeds that, that could be presented to the board, you know, that...
Like, what kind of comment are you looking for?
I, I don't know, I, that's what I'm, I'm not an attorney, like saying that the, the, uh, the, uh, a, what's the word I'm looking for?
A right-of-way, or?
Yeah, something to do with easement, or, uh, you know, like when you get, what, I'm having a brain death, when you get the, uh, uh, insurance for when you buy a property, what is that, from the trust?
Title.
Title. I like, a title company that, uh, a title attorney that looked over the deed and said...
Says that there's a right-of-way easement on this property.
Yeah.
Because they had that done. The biggest problem is that this has been in the same ownership since the forties. So it's not like that little yellow house on the right was ever transferred and then bought back, or, it's, it's been in there, it's been in the family land. You got a sewer line going through it, and then you've got the, the house on that, I don't know the people's name, you enter on the right, they've got a driveway there.
See, that's what I was struggling with.
That's their access going on to Maple Ave. They can't get onto Maple Ave. They're going onto that private road.
Didn't we have?
I thought I saw a driveway, I thought I saw something other than that on their property.
Further, for going down Maple Ave? Well, that goes to a garage, so I don't know how they get to the garage off of, off of the little Lantern Lane. I, we've, I've, from a surveying, engineering standpoint, we've done as much as we can possibly find to show that this was, those buildings existed before nineteen fifty-four, because that was the first question attorneys asked, and we proved it. Now they, "Oh, that's not good enough." Well, you gotta worry about this a little bit, and this... And you're always saying, "We don't want to set a precedent case by case." Well, here's a case by case. Help, help teams come up with a solution, because I thought we had a pretty clear-cut roadway going through there that's not used once in a while, it's used every day for those people going to the, to the trailer park. And it's a safety way to get into that trailer park. It's a second access.
We don't have any way, Norm, to put a request, I guess what I'm trying to do is lock this thing down, so we don't get into this again, so...
Well, I, I...
You know, you can't put on an ANR conditions, I know that. See, that's, Julian, what I was getting at is some way to say, so this does, if it's case by case, to say that this is a, uh, right-of-way slash easement, whatever it needs to be, and it'll be on any deeds that are associated with these lots. That's what I, I guess I was getting at.
You call it a private road, so that the town can never, I mean, I just write it private, I think it might even be written in there, I can't see it from here. That it's private, it's not the town of Rattlin, and in one of your, number B, allows you to have frontage on a private road, on the Form A form itself.
Yeah.
Does the... But we're calling it a private road.
Have anything on it?
It's obviously safe.
When it was issued?
What's that?
Builder's permit was issued for that trailer? Did it say what road this was on to give a, uh...
I don't know.
Nineteen fifty-four, did they, did they keep that for the record?
If they did, it would be on a index card, it would be also upstairs in, in the community hall. In the box on the left-hand side.
Funny, because you know where that box is. So, just that fact of it being a private road, and we did prove there was something there before nineteen fifty-four, because those buildings were done before nineteen fifty-four. So, putting those two together, no one else could come in with another situation like this, that there's two dwellings that I can think of in Rattlin. I don't, the only other one that I can think of was on, on Demin Fun right-of-way, and this board allowed them to split the frontage from fifty feet to twenty-five apiece, and create each house have their own house lot, which, I don't know where that came from, but it, it happened, because there were two houses there.
Is, was Lantern Way before it got created? What she's getting at in here, and that's what I'm struggling with, was there a road there, or some type of way to access Lot Three from the backside of that property before this? That's, that's what I'm struggling with, what she's...
From, from the cul-de-sac?
Yeah, yeah, was there a dirt road that came through there at one time, and that's, that's what she's referring to?
Yes, that, that came, that was, it was like a triangular road. It came up, down at the bottom of the page, and went straight into the trailer park.
Okay.
And it came to a triangle, and this came back to Maple Ave.
So that was the loop?
It always went right straight through, it never didn't...
Originally what it shows here is Lewis Street that comes in, and that was it.
So Lewis was the, basically, the come-around and come-in the back, okay?
That's what...
And when they put in Lantern Way, that's where the quote, "No more access to Lot Three" happened, it was from Maple Ave then. Is that a correct statement?
I guess so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm having a hard time taking away from a landowner when...
If it wasn't there for so long, and used, so now the other thing that you, this board, adverse access, or, uh, what is it when it's obstructed? The word for, like the last time they were talking about Godreel, "Oh, there's a Godreel, you can't give frontage."
Yeah.
That, there is illusory, there is no illusory situation here, because it's already existing, it's built.
That's the only problem I have with her first one, Norm, is if that cul-de-sac was put in, and it cut off the access to Lot Three, then the only access to Lot...
Or provided access to Lot Three.
It could, if it would, if it would have went through, it wouldn't have been a cul-de-sac, then I agree, but it doesn't look like that was done, correct? That cul-de-sac was...
Was not built, and it was, it was deemed removed by the ZBA.
Yeah.
To a whole hearing process. It wasn't just a, an opinion, it was actually done. "Well, guys, it's okay, you've got two houses on one piece of land, and he wants to, he wants to square it up while he's in, while he's still young, in his early eighties." I feel we have the ingredients to show that it is a pri- private, not a public, private driveway, or a private road that accesses this main piece, that cross, uh, the, the neighbor at the beginning, the yellow, I call it the yellow house, the, the, the little one on the right, and a safety access deliveries, I mean, there's, everybody goes up that road with, with Amazon, oil, gas, whatever's out there, electric, all goes there. So, in this case, I feel it's a, you can hang your hat on a private road.
What did Concon, uh...
Approved that?
In the back.
Two thousand and four, we started this with Bonnie.
It's ready?
Two thousand and four, two thousand and five, she started building in like two thousand and six.
Any, any, um...
Orders of condition or anything?
Orders of conditions on that, talking about anything, was that ever looked at?
I didn't.
There was, that site plan was approved with the cul-de-sac, Chief Rashala wanted turnarounds.
Yep, for the fire...
So we put them in there, and then Bonnie approached saying, "Why do we need a turnaround when it goes right through?"
Out to Maple Ave.
Out to Maple Ave, and she had a hearing, and they said, "Well, that does make sense. We've been doing it anyways, whether you have a cul-de-sac or not, you're going now."
So the ZBA sort of approved the passage, am I right, Norm?
Sort of, yeah.
So that, that's why I'm struggling, that's why I'm struggling with, I get Amy's opinion, but the ZBA sort of took the cul-de-sac out, and I don't want to use authorize, but indicated that there's a second egress to that dead-end road.
But there isn't now.
There isn't, there's no cul-de-sac there, no.
There's no second egress?
No, around the back, around this side to, in front of, like, Gates of Zirkles Body Shop. The road goes in.
Yeah.
And then it comes back down out this way. So...
It's clear that whole distance.
It's clear that whole distance.
See, there's what I'm struggling with, I've got a second egress.
Yeah.
So, by taking that cul-de-sac out and letting, if you want to call it Lantern Way, whatever, go to the easement, and then go to Maple Ave, I've got access to the property from Lantern and from Maple. Am I correcting that as? Let me, let me rephrase that, let me go up another point.
Lewis.
What I'm trying to do...
Focus on, do you have the mic allowed by any chance?
Or is there a locus on this plan?
Just right here?
Yeah, right up.
Slide it up, up a little higher?
There.
Okay, right there.
So what I'm trying to say...
So that little cul-de-sac, that doesn't exist, that's gone.
But does this road go?
Right through, right, that's it, that's what we're talking about.
Okay, see, that's, if the ZBA took the cul-de-sac out of here and let that road as access be mitigated by the easement or right-of-way out there, then I have a hard time saying no. Did they, did they, how did they classify it as?
I don't have it. Private road, I believe. It's, I did submit the, the ZBA stuff, that they eliminated, that just happens to be on a roadmap, don't ask me why.
Doesn't exist.
But it doesn't exist. The other one does, the one on the left, that little circle, that exists.
But this, literally...
That traded-out area is this property.
If you don't have something going out here, I've got a dead end.
You have a dead end, that's over, over, well, it might be close to a thousand feet, that may be over a thousand feet. Yeah, it shows up here perfectly on this one, and that goes, it's, you can see the dotted line.
Yeah, I know.
There's a little bit of a curve there, but it's a, it's the same width.
And... Hold on, hold on. Okay.
Through the chair, Dave, have you seen anything like this before? I need help, because this is a new one to me, but I, I'm sort of tending to side with Julian, because I've got a dead end here, and if the ZBA took this cul-de-sac out, because they realized that it was gonna be another access point, I'm struggling.
Okay, ZBA did it for what reason? To create something, or?
To get rid of the cul-de-sac, but to do it, again, I...
It's a dead shot.
Instead of a dead end there, yeah.
Dead shot to a...
I'm, I'm just reading the, the ZBA thing.
I gotta read, I didn't, is it in a packet, and I missed it?
First of all, uh, let's see, it says, "The petitioner's request to eliminate the cul-de-section around on Bigelow Lane, Lantern Lane, is granted."
Yeah.
And then, in this paragraph, "The original purpose for the cul-de-sac turnaround was to provide sufficient emergency access or egress from the property. At the present time, a right-of-way allowed by an abutter has been deemed sufficient to allow the necessary emergency access and egress from the premises." "The zoning board of appeal adopts the planning board's, uh, recommendation, blah 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 blah, that a conditional approval be imposed that the right-of-way will be maintained at a full width twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year." Okay, the police chief provided a letter stating the existing right-of-way serving fifty-seven Maple Ave is a sufficient secondary method of access for emergency vehicles.
So what is it, the right width right now, and the right character to be called?
A private road.
Because a private road is also gonna maintain, be maintained, three sixty-five, to handle all emergency vehicles?
But, again, I'm, I'm struggling, I, and again, I'm not an attorney, when it says secondary method. So the primary is coming up Lantern, and then the secondary, I...
So it's a one-way street?
Yeah. I, I, I'm torn.
I think more people use this road than the other road, because more new houses are on this, on this section here. These are all the new ones. They go right down around here on the inside and the outside. These are all the old, the old ones, and to go to Maple Ave, these people are definitely going this way every time, because it's one shot out, and then you're not going to into an intersection and making a turn, you're going right out onto Maple Ave. And that's mainly why Bonnie went through that exercise, to take care of that.
See here, Norm, go to the, uh, the, the next page, four, on the orders of condition, it says, "With respect to the removal of the cul-de-sac around on Bigelow Lane, Lantern Lane, the road is to be extended through the right-of-way and will be maintained by the petitioner." It should be the next page, yeah, that one right there. That, that sort of gives me the...
It's taken care of and it's.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Actually being taken care of because of all the other people in there, I think there's thirty, thirty new units in there.
I mean, that sort of gives me a little bit of, it's what I'm looking for. Something to hang my hat on.
Yeah.
Because it's an, it's an order of condition in the ZBA, so to Julian's earlier point.
The width's proper?
I believe it is. It's, it, it's used every day with, with traffic.
The way traffic.
The way traffic, I mean, like I said the last week, I think Amazon's probably driving right up there right now as we're speaking.
So I'm gathering this is now, based on this, it's a right of way from anybody on Lantern Lane. So they have the right to access that out to Maple Ave, if I'm not correct.
I believe that, I, I think.
ZBA is calling it a right of way.
Yeah.
I believe there is, they have with that ZBA, that's why they granted Bonnie to eliminate the cul-de-sac because she has rights from her sister, which is Ames, to use that.
That's ten years.
And that's why we've got this, we have it.
Man, I really.
And mainly it's still all private, I think I just emphasize on that even more, it's private, it's not town of Rome has to touch this thing.
Yes, but it has to stay.
Has, oh yeah, well, I can guarantee you this, this fifteen houses that are built on it, they're using this, that would not, not allow that to stay. Actually thirty.
I tell you, I, I, I'm leaning. More safety on this, not necessarily because it's. Not, not, not that I'm dismissing Amy's letter.
No, me either.
But to be, to be honest with you, I think part of the problem was what, was what the ZBA did.
Yeah.
Now, did the ZBA turn around and tell Bonnie to register this or?
No.
It's not entering.
It's just saying the petitioner has to maintain it, that's the only thing that's in here in the order of condition.
You know, they said, go ahead.
Yeah.
So if it's private, it does not have to be registered as such.
Well, with this plan, it will be registered as a private way because it's written on it, so this is the first, this is the first. If you go into the, I mean, I believe I wrote private and if I didn't, I'll write it right now. Say right there, writing that text, I guess it's kind of blurry.
Blown up. Yes, you do a private road travel surface.
Lantern Drive.
Ten foot, ten foot wide right of way.
How wide?
Ten feet.
No, no.
Isn't that what it says, it says existing ten foot wide right of way, Lantern Lane.
Right of way.
Oh, right of way, okay.
That's, that might be because.
It doesn't have the road width, okay.
It's right in that, that's twenty foot wide right there the whole way and it's kind of the squiggly line is the edge of it. But it's got to be fifteen feet wide anyways. It blends into, into Bonnie's.
I'm just, I'm just thinking that we're.
I don't want to override the, uh, ZBA because that's sort of a.
We're not overriding them, but. I, I think their intent was for it to be used as a private road. And I think by approving the, or both in the A and R, all we're doing is confirming that.
Yeah, that's sort of what I was thinking.
Any thoughts?
I think you have the information from town council and the test. So whatever happened with that ZBA decision, that applies to the lot over here. Typically, unless they co-applicants for a decision, a condition on this one doesn't bind that front property. The real test, as far as I understand it, is when was it laid out? There's an assertion that was laid out before nineteen fifty-four, but we don't have anything to verify that. So to me, it seems to be as outlined here in this, in this opinion. And if you're looking for a remedy, the remedy is a subdivision. But that's for you, you people have to make that choice and assuming that you have more of the history of the, of the land, you may think otherwise than what you have. By way of this opinion.
What is your recollection of the history of that? Of his, of its existence, let's just put it that way.
See, I don't remember when I was in high school, that being there. That was up to nineteen sixty-one. But.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I was pulling in that yad for another reason. You did mention Bonnie's sister. Oh, you know you're on tape and right now your wife's got you. They have the fifty-one percent rule in Massachusetts. I get fifty-one percent of his Brimfield stuff.
Delivering for Amazon, huh?
Thank God I was married in sixty-eight. Wow, I was two.
Oh, geez.
If anything, it will clean it up for, from this point on, on what this is and this is it, there's nothing else that could be done here. There's already two of the three, it's already there, it's done.
If, if it went to subdivision, that means it'd have to become a, it could be considered, still considered a private road if it went to subdivision because. I'm just.
I guess, but that's a lot of.
Yeah, right, yeah. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying.
You're right, it could be, it could be suggested and done, but boy, that is a real, not that it matters that it's a, the, the house has been in that family since Rutland pretty much started. And now they're going to have to jump these hoops to get the same result. Because nothing's going to change, the drainage is done, the road is there, it's passable, it's usable. There's two houses using it, actually three houses using it now. And the rest of the, directly, and then the rest of the project goes in and out of it. Daily, hourly. And you have a chief, chief of police's recommendation that it's, it's safe for safety.
Did we, Dave, did we get anything from, uh, Director Buckley on this? Or did we ask him?
We didn't ask him for anything, we don't have anything from him and I don't, I mean, I think you've heard that the record's been exhausted in terms of what materials are available.
Yeah.
And it's private road, so you wouldn't have that. Because he wouldn't be maintaining.
Part of the, the special permit modification for that was, let me see, oh, that was in Lantern Lane with the pipe being sleeved.
Yeah.
The manhole.
Yeah, because the sewer, the sewer was old and in rough shape, so they, they lined it.
Yeah, they made something to do with the line.
They did a whole process and it, and it worked out real nice for, without having to rip everything up.
I'm torn.
It will clear everything up and that, that plan will from now on forever clear up what that is, it's a private road. Access to that Bigelow Park and these lots.
Well, if it was five or ten lots, I'd say no, absolutely, but.
It's two. Oh, two front on Maple Ave and two on the backside. I, I just, Norm, keep hanging my hat on the ZBA back and forth because I, I, I hate to say this, but it's like our decision's sort of been painted in the corner from their decision on twenty thirteen.
Yeah.
So. Any else thoughts? This is before my time, I'm just trying to read what documentation I've got.
Well, I, what was written and read from the ZBA has made up my mind already. Yeah, I, like I say, I'll just even, just, just to summarize among other things, they don't talk about easement, they're talking about right of way.
Yeah.
So at least they felt it was more than just like a sewer easement or something like that. I mean, that was not correct on their part.
Yeah, they were calling it right of way for access.
Yeah, yeah. And since they got report from.
Yet the, yet the deed calls easement, see, that's the problem I've got, the ZBA either didn't read the deed or, but again, this is a written document that's been recorded, so I mean.
Yeah, and.
But there's also another easement that, in the deed with the sewer, so there's, there's different easements, so things.
That maybe in the future or something like that, you know, hopefully they, I would think the ZBA would have asked for it to be. Vile or something.
It's not like it's that old, it's twenty thirteen, so it's not.
Which detail has changed since you've been on in, in decision-making and documents following. I just go and by the registry of deeds, when I first started, we were in book nine thousand. We're in book sixty thousand or sixty-eight thousand right now. And that's only recording of real estate documents. So everything now is more of this degree than two lines on a paper saying, yep, here's a road.
I guess I'll make a motion to endorse.
I'll second. Welcome to Planning Board.
Yeah.
All of that decision's not this difficult.
Yeah.
But I mean, but be prepared, this.
Should be hashed out, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, the thing, the thing is that, and I hate to totally agree with you.
You're not going to agree with me, I'm not asking if you agree with me, I'm just putting your stuff on the table.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you know.
Well, this, this'll dot the i's and cross the t's on what ZBA said in twenty thirteen. And I'm fine with that, I, that's why I made the motion, I think it's, let's just put it to bed.
So have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Bearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 This is, let me say, Julian, this is the one, this is one of the few times I, the lawyer and I don't see eye to eye.
We've, you've asked for all the information we can give and we, we, we tried the best we could and I thank you guys on behalf of Mr. Ames. He'll be very happy because the last phone call I had with him, he wasn't very happy with me.
One of the, one of the problems was, you know, someone else said.
I don't make the rules.
An expert to giving you an opinion and then you don't respect that opinion, why did you do it in the first place?
Welcome to my world. That's not where the line goes, I had you to put the line here before you did something goes there.
Yeah. Yeah, and then you'd say, I have a professional license, I'm not moving in.
Oh, I know, here we go, everybody's, here's the deed. The thing, the best one is when somebody says, well, I own to those trees way back there, that's about five hundred feet away. You bought ten acres? Oh no, I bought three quarters of an acre. Well, the math would mean you got ten acres.
Yeah.
That happens.
Well, very few times I didn't, I don't say I disagree with Amy, but I just think in this case.
Ninth. Wow, already.
Leading to July fourth in a heartbeat.
Let me get it. Flat.
Hey, this.
All right.
Yeah, number one is a large piece of the puzzle. Have you looked into it, signed off on? I wasn't sure since I just came on if I.
No, you can't. You can't on this one because you weren't here when this started.
No, I haven't signed off on these.
At the registry, if his name's not in there blocked, I don't want it, please. When he leaves here, it's a whole, you guys know what the motor, registry of motor vehicles is like. Well, the registry of deeds is not much different.
Does that my paper clip on the end of it?
So if they, if they see one little glitch, I had one, this recently, that, now we slide this around the table. There was a blue line from a pen of somewhere.
Oh, yeah.
And it was, three people had to come and look at the plan to make sure that this is acceptable.
Oh, that, that you didn't add a line.
It was just a, just a, something in transport going across the table from. No, no, it's not, it didn't cover any names or any, any text or anything, it's just on the paper. So I always tell people when it rains, if this gets wet, it's spoiled, you'll have spots, they won't.
Yeah, that's why we always put the, uh, the zippy things over.
That was easy.
Yeah. Okay. That's fifty-seven Maple Ave, number six, AR three fifteen East County Road. Young soul, youth lands, there's no, okay. This is one that we've seen something similar before.
Yeah.
The applicant's representative is on this, on call here.
Is that Heidi?
No. My name is John, my name is John Marsh and I'm from Farland Court here on behalf of the applicant.
So you didn't go down to see the county commissioner to get the road straightened out, huh?
Not yet, no.
See what I did?
This project we have before you tonight was similar to one that we had submitted last year, uh, we were before the board last, um, August. And at that time, there were, the board had some concerns about the frontage for the, the back lot, the larger lot. There was some concern at the frontage of the luxury frontage, um, and we were asked to, um, basically get the, the project permitted through conservation to demonstrate that. Demonstrate that the frontage could be utilized.
That way.
So, so we did that and we, we got our order of conditions for conservation, um, and we're here tonight to, uh, present the formal plan.
Okay, how many acres?
Looking for that. Cut the top here if I can.
Yeah, I haven't got a calculator, it's a hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven square feet. How, how many acres is that lot one?
Uh, it's four point two acres.
So it's below five, and I was going to say it's too bad it wasn't five because then it would have.
Yeah.
Could have made it into an estate lot. Fifty, fifty feet of frontage, it can go five hundred feet.
Yeah.
To where the houses would be. The rest of the acreage has to be five acres or more.
Yeah.
Is, is it?
They can only do two lots on this, right?
I believe it's two. He should have two hundred feet on this right here. One thirty-four and sixty-six. Yeah. That's two hundred. It's two hundred and sixty.
Two hundred and sixty-four, so.
This here, yeah. So it comes in under. So it comes in under four hundred, so it only can be a single lot.
But that thirty-five on the other piece of lot's not on highway, correct? It's not on a road. It's off the road, correct?
In reality, this is either the town of Rutland's...
Somebody owns it? Or the state owns it?
It's... The town of Rutland has jurisdiction over that piece of property at the present time.
So you couldn't cross...
And that's why you probably couldn't cross it unless you... That's why I'm asking. You should've gone to the Worcester... Yeah, right.
See, my other problem is, what do you see on sixty-eight there coming into that road? That we got advice from an attorney on earlier.
The wetlands.
Look at that one.
Yeah.
Doesn't show it there.
Shows.
See, on this drawing, it shows the...
Double line?
No, it shows the guardrails.
Oh, oh, oh.
So we already made that mistake once and learned from it from the attorney, so...
But there are no guardrails.
There aren't none there?
Not up here. Not over on this part.
No, but we're talking about lot one, correct? Or am I on the wrong lot? Or are we talking lot two? I apologize. I thought this was for lot one.
I'm gonna say, I think it's...
Because if I'm mistaken, in front of lot one, there's a guardrail in front of the whole access point.
I think I disagree with you there.
That's what this drawing shows that I've got.
Is that right?
Yeah, look at... You can see it's barely in... It's barely shadowed. You can see the... Right above the line of the road, you can see the guardrail. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe I'm not.
Would a Google map show that well enough?
It does show it, but what...
I mean, I... Is that something I want to look into or you wanna just... Maybe the applicant has a comment about that guardrail.
Yeah. Maybe we should ask the applicant. Is there a guardrail in front of all of that two hundred and sixty-four foot frontage on the left side of lot one?
There is currently a guardrail extending pretty much up to the sign near the driveway, the existing driveway.
No access then.
Well, maybe you also want to ask the applicant about if it could be moved to just get into that portion of the site where they're claiming they solved the illusory frontage issue. Would that be permissible?
Yeah. Have you investigated at all removing part of the guardrail for access?
Hypothetically, if they were...
We haven't investigated that. We were concentrating the permitting through conservation. If the guardrail is a separate issue as far as illusory frontage, we can certainly petition the town or county. I'm not sure who has jurisdiction over that.
It was the county commissioner.
County commissioner.
It's a county road.
I remember having that talk with the attorney.
Yeah, I know. You had the whole thing with...
Yeah.
There's a lot.
I learned something. But on the one, on one twenty-two A, since there was access, it's a moot point. But there's no access here, so it's not a moot point anymore. I don't want to be wrong twice.
Yeah. But if it's allowed to be removed, then it's fine.
Oh, I'm fine with that then. I just want to make sure that i's are dotted and t's are crossed and we don't make another... We don't make a mistake. So...
Understood.
I would be... Again, this is me on the board. I'd be comfortable if I had something from the authority saying that yes, you could remove a section to put a driveway in there. And then I would say, "Are the board's discussion with our attorney before of not having access due to a guardrail being there" would make me feel a lot more comfortable.
Yeah.
Signing the A and R.
See, to be perfectly honest with you, I think the guardrail situation probably more a case of someone trying to get access to property from a limited access highway. You know, where in a case like that, you probably would not be able to remove some piece of the guardrail. But this is not a limited access highway. By the stretch of the imagination.
This house is all over it.
And just beyond there, I do know that it falls off drastically and then there's where the guardrail is.
Well, they put it up there for some reason.
Uh, let's see. Better not because what I heard a long time ago was because, and I'm talking a long, long time ago, somebody had an in with a steel company in Massachusetts wrote a law.
How many dollars a foot do they pay for that?
Yes.
I just... It's one of those things. I just remember it wasn't Lauren. It was another one of the attorneys that said that was part of the requirement. That was part of that A and R book that Patrick came out with, DePaul Patrick. So I just... I mean, I'm fine if the board wants to go forward. I just, for my own edification, I'd really like to make sure that whoever owns it is okay with removing enough to get a driveway in there.
Why don't we have him investigate?
I think we'd like to continue this and have you investigate removal of that guardrail for driveway purposes.
Okay. Are there any other concerns the board has with this or if we were to get that straightened out with the county commissioner?
Other than that, I... Is the intent through the chair to bring the driveway in where that guardrail is or into the thirty-five foot?
No, with a guardrail, I thought. That's where he had the wetland delineated.
Yeah, the wetlands up on, so...
So the intent would be to access from the thirty-five foot strip.
Oh, it was.
We did permit the driveway through the other frontage to demonstrate that it could be accessed from that side to alleviate the illusory frontage concern. But the applicant would like to...
See, and then Norm, that intrigues me with this. That's not...
Yeah, that's another story then. What about that land that it's crossing that belongs to who knows who?
Yeah, because then it's not frontage. It's basically landlocked because this land's owned by somebody else.
No, it's still not landlocked.
Well, no, I meant this little portion here. Not the property, but that little portion is landlocked by somebody else's property. I just... What's going over on Bond Road right now? And I'm not... I don't want to go through this again.
Are you sure you can put the driveway through that thirty-five foot stretch?
Yeah, we have it graded out and drawn up. It's actually... It's a shorter driveway and it's less grading than going the other way.
But who owns the property in front, next to the road?
That is the road layout.
That is correct.
Yeah. What we're saying is where that thirty-five feet is... I'm sorry, I'm trying to... I'm thinking you're looking at this. That thirty-five feet, there's that triangular portion in front of it before it goes out to sixty-eight, and that's owned by somebody else. So that... You almost need a easement to go through that property to the road, correct?
I don't think so.
Okay, I don't know.
You get the county commissioner to move the line.
The thing is, what I would say they probably have done is they have maintained this line as the right of way.
Oh, okay.
When the road was there, but they moved the road.
But they're still maintaining the right of way is there. The road is moved, but not the right of way.
So the right of way goes all the way from here back to here then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So then it's just a right of way access and then...
You know, that's kind of like Main Street.
Okay.
Right.
You know?
Right. And who owns that?
Hundred and sixty-five feet of width.
Yeah, ten rod.
Right of way.
Just for my edification, then all they need to do from whoever owns that road is just get a cut permit then.
Driveway permit.
Yeah, driveway permit. Yeah, okay. All right, good enough. Then I have no more questions. It'd basically be just to make sure from the county commissioners.
Well, I still think from the county commissioners, the thing is to find out if he can remove it, not that he's going to.
Yeah.
But if needed, can he? Is he allowed to?
Enough to get a driveway in.
Right, enough to get a driveway in.
That satisfies me then.
At the same time he's talking about that, ask about, you know, is there any way of moving that?
Right of way?
Right of way. Move the bounds. Move the bounds to where the rest of them are.
Yeah, but then the people that own the house all of a sudden would...
You really think they're gonna do that?
State's not gonna do that. That's a sixty-eight's a state road, correct? Not a Rutland road.
Rutland maintained, but it's a...
State-owned?
It's a state.
That's a...
Ain't happening.
No, no, they're not gonna do that, yeah.
That's it, so I guess the direction is...
That's why I had asked Phil Buckley to look into it. I never heard back.
So I guess I would request a continuance for this for the next public hearing.
Okay.
The next public meeting is the twenty-third.
All right, so we'll do some homework and we'll get back to you.
I think we also want to just... State of working, the applicant granted constructive grant deadline extension from three twenty-four to three twenty-nine.
So moved.
John, I'll be sending out the paperwork to you as the representative.
Okay.
And maybe you can sign off on it tomorrow.
I will do that.
All right.
Excellent, okay.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Okay, yep, you too. Okay, you made a motion.
Yes.
Continue and extend.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Extend to when was it?
Twenty-third.
The twenty-third. The constructive grant for three twenty-four to three twenty-nine.
How much?
I think he meant May, not in there.
I probably do mean May because that's what month we're in. Yep, it's getting late, huh?
Yeah. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Let's see, force of extension. We do not have anything back from James Newey. It was postponed, so we didn't open it.
That's correct.
So we just further postpone it?
I would recommend that, yep.
So moved.
Postponed to...
Twenty-third.
May twenty-third.
Not April or March or...
Do you think... Dave and Norm, do you think they'll be ready by then or will Kevin?
I hope so. He's had it for two months. Yeah, speak out on that one. It's been a little while that they've had this, so please...
Been a while.
Here's another one. My guy's getting on me like, "What's going on?"
Yeah, I'm sure.
I thought we were gonna speak about this a little bit, but we already... I'm assuming that we've already spoke about it and you guys are all happy. We're just getting the technical stuff out of the way, right?
We haven't even opened it yet.
We had our informal staff meeting and everything went beautiful.
Yeah, so...
Give me something to give my client because she's ready to rip my head off.
If your client wants to call the planning office, we'd like to explain the issue with Quinn Engineering that he is without staff. He is a one-man show now.
We're gonna hire somebody.
That's Kevin's. I'm sure that's on the front of his mind.
Sure he's trying, believe me.
Absolutely he's trying.
Yeah, I'm competing with him because I'm trying to grab every mechanical P E engineer I can get my hands on.
So it's not just your client isn't the only one who might be delayed on projects. It's anybody else who Quinn Engineering was involved with.
It's... I understand. It's been... Not to beat a dead horse, but this has been a while on this one. I think we submitted it.
So that's strange. Did you read the deed on that piece of property?
On which piece of property?
For us all, on that piece of property.
Yes, we did.
You want to go six forty-five to six forty-five?
Yeah.
Because I always thought he deeded it not to be built on.
I didn't see that in the deed.
Anyway, I think we had a motion.
Motion to extend to...
Just to give you a time period.
Not second.
Six forty-five.
Second?
Second. Five twenty-three at what? Six forty-five.
Any discussion? Room table?
Aye. You get to be involved in this one. It's never been opened.
Okay, cool.
It's a glazing one.
May twenty-second, did you say?
Yes.
Yeah, twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Six forty-five.
I realize we decided on the extension. Do you think there's a necessity for a site block on this one? Kind of thinking ahead.
It's pretty steep, I'll tell you that from what I'm seeing. Maybe I'm not reading...
Maybe it is, but none of the work is being done in the steep part. It's way up right up near the flat part.
Yep.
Right up top.
Strange, you know, I can't... My tax accountant way back.
Oh, yeah.
And I mean way back and...
Thank you.
That was a Griffin. Was that a Griffin before?
I could've sworn it was down.
That was a Griffin.
Used to be a tax accountant, lived in the house up in the...
Oh, this is over by Dave Cesarkos.
Field was wide open.
Last... Okay.
Right next to Dave Cesarkos.
Yeah. Yeah.
I would say it might be a good idea.
I would say... Drive up there. Drive up on most of the road that we're proposing, so leave it to the field. I guess it's already paved right to the house.
And that house is coming out?
Nope.
No. Beyond it is. The pool and...
The pool is... The house is...
Oh, you're right. I see that. Existing pool shed to be raised. I don't know. Cul-de-sac with a pool in the middle? That could be new to Robert.
Mr. Cherry, would you...
Close to the senior housing now, just there.
Been hearing on this one?
Rock down the hill.
You are kind of going down the road of discussion. I'm just pointing out to the board what's...
Well, no, we just postponed it.
Okay.
So...
And we're talking about it.
Sorry, I was just looking at it.
Are you here for that?
Yeah.
Sorry.
I don't know. I just was looking at it. So May twenty-third, six forty-five, we will open it.
Okay. Next. Rice Lemon Estates subdivision, no reports.
No report?
No. Lemon Estates?
Before we get any further.
Yep.
Do you remember, because it was brought up on a Sunday, a budget thing, there was a gentleman complaining that the two subdivision parts are not being connected.
Yeah.
I told him that I thought it was... He was gonna start on it at the end of this year roughly in the fall. And he said he's heard it was different. It was not.
That little cul-de-sac at the Sharnak Hill.
No, that was for the next meeting.
State...
The next meeting.
Lemon Lane or...
It's Lemon Circle, probably.
Circle, yeah.
So he's gonna do the connection as the last phase, then?
Connection, that's gonna be the last phase.
Yeah.
Man, I can tell you there's a fire chief that wasn't happy. He wants that connected.
Yeah. So no, these people would like it.
That's a pretty small cul-de-sac going in there.
Yeah.
So, you know, he's looking for more lots. I've got a hunch he's gonna be working on that this summer.
Yeah. Is there any chance we could just... I mean, again, I'm an engineer. I like timetables. Any chance we could ask him for a, you know, what's his timetable for?
Phase five?
Phase five, yeah. Give us a quarter at least, maybe. What quarter is it hitting?
Do you have any knowledge of this, Julian?
This is Bryce.
Yeah, phase five.
It's the connection. It's...
That's... I think he was talking this summer.
Okay.
He's working on the lemon piece right now and they're like moving pretty quickly on that.
There's not a lot of houses there, so... And they're probably all sold if I'm betting dollars to donuts.
Oh, he is. And he's got a lot of people working, so he's moving... He's looking to try to get everything wrapped up. Too many loose ends. He's like...
He's gonna get these things wrapped up.
And then he was telling me that this summer, that connecting was... Italian was...
Well, Dick, that'd be a quarter ahead of where you had told the person if it's done this summer or at least connected. Because he's gotta get the road in before he does any of the lots, so... If he gets it in this summer, that means in the... if he gets it in this summer, that means in the fall he could work on all of the, uh, and including the cul-de-sac, um, the road acceptance documentation.
Right.
For lemon.
For the next town meeting, for the, for, uh, spring town meeting of twenty twenty-four.
I think that's, he's, I think he wants to do this one that way.
Yeah.
That it's done, get it approved, so it doesn't sit and get, you know, deteriorated for five years.
'Cause then he could do-
It costs a lot to fix it.
He could do the entrance.
The entrance on phase three.
Yep.
There's places that the, the pavement is already crazing.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's near the pump station.
Yes.
Now, that's, well, that's base coat, so that's not, that's not finished, so that'll all-
Yeah.
Right.
But he ended up having to, uh, tear up all the base coat on Bear Hill.
Right, the whole road.
All right, I'm good, I just wanted to, I wanted to get that covered, 'cause Seth had made that comment to me a few times, he wants to-
I have nothing else, so thank you guys very much.
Thanks, Julian.
See you in a couple weeks.
Yep.
Bye.
Okay, Brittonal Estates, again, no reports, I know they are definitely working down there, uh, I'm hearing them daily.
Yep, so do I.
And, uh, somewhere along the line, I had a call from Klee. We have sold house lots already.
Yeah, crazy money, too.
One, one house, I think he said up around eight hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah, said, when I talked to him, they're actually buying houses for more than what he initially wanted to sell them for, and I'm going, you gotta be kidding me, he's, nope, there's no inventory, there's no inventory of houses in this area, so.
So that means he is gonna put the connection to the rail trail this time.
Probably should make sure we have that discussion with this.
Okay, Bear Hill two, once again, no report.
I hear them working all that.
We're moving along here. Uh, next way, street acceptance, we do have a report from Quinn. This one.
I thought it was a pretty good, uh- Those nine ninety-nine of them, saw them a hell of a lot happier.
Yeah.
Oh, the streetlights, we gotta get them to put those in.
No, knock it off. I don't find that, I don't like-
Five hundred, uh, loom streetlights.
Look at the stars.
Same, same as the ones that are over at, uh, and Holden in the retirement by the golf course, those nice big landing light ones.
So, um-
Little shade trees, probably.
Who, who's gonna be doing this?
What's his name?
Dave Lucier.
Pardon?
Dave Lucier.
Davis, it's gonna be up to him?
Yeah. So there's not much.
No, but he could, he could have this done relatively toot sweet.
Yeah, so, crack ceiling.
I'm just hoping the crack ceiling, he does do it hot.
When this went in, did, did, did we have the bounds requirement, or is this after the fact?
This is an after a fact, and yes.
'Cause I didn't see that in here as a report, about bounds.
Why did I thought it? We've always required bounds.
Yeah, I just didn't see any report on that, so that's why I was wanting to just, it's more of a double check than anything.
Yes, uh, the answer, everyone must submit plans to the rotten plant board, uh, subdivision sheet.
They already certified mines for installs required.
Monuments are required.
You got it, I missed, I was looking for bounds and I didn't see the monuments.
Yeah.
All right. But somebody's gotta check those to make sure they're there, too.
Yes.
Yeah, that's Quinn.
It is Quinn.
Okay.
Monument is a two-inch, or inch and a half, or something like that, steel rod acid, oh, you're talking about the, not the bounds, but the other ones where the road-
The roadway.
Not 'cause-
The subdivision, uh, bounds.
Okay.
Yeah, and they're the five-inch, five-inch square concrete holes that they bury into the ground.
Okay, cool.
And they put a drill hole in the-
But what about the-
See, that's what, that, that's what I was hitting on, see, this says monuments, but I was thinking bounds.
They call them monuments.
Well, I was thinking the bounds for the, uh-
For the house lots?
House lots.
That was, this was-
Way before we required that.
All right, he gets off.
Gets off on that one.
Didn't hurt, we could ask, though.
I know.
We just recently required, we, we added a, a, an additional requirement, that all, all lot bounds have to be marked with either concrete posts, or if it's a back one with a one-inch steel post driven. And it's kind of a question of, you know, if it was created before we added that rule, they don't have to do it, but if the law was created after, now they do.
Yeah, so it doesn't hurt to ask them and see if that's what they're gonna do there.
Yeah, from past experience and, and, um, listening to other people, it's something that I wish we'd done a long time ago.
Yeah, makes it easier and more and more well.
I just, I can't see anyone buying a piece of property without knowing that their boundaries are.
Yeah.
State one, yeah. People just don't know, you know, how much land is involved in-
Yeah, I found out.
Then you gotta hire somebody else to come in.
Do it again. Which I did, 'cause I, I gained an extra fifty feet of frontage that I was told wasn't mine until it was surveyed, and I'm like, oh, look at that!
Yeah, there you go.
And then what you do is, in Mass, or at least, this is I learned from living in Chicago, you take that survey and you record it, and then your neighbor can't, 'cause there's a ten-year rule in Mass, and most states, that if they mow, do anything to that area in ten years, they can go to land court and try to take it, and, uh, but as soon as you record it, it starts the clock over. So, just a tool I learned and, uh-
There you go.
Helps alleviate any issues.
I have to laugh at the, the West detention basin, with new litter and plastic playground. Uh, has-
Well, it's probably better than the one that-
Lucier had gotten a copy of this?
Yes.
Okay, so he's aware of it.
By Treasure Valley, what, the name of that estate up in there? On the other side of it.
Deer Run?
Deer Run, Deer Run, pardon?
Myelob Circle.
Yeah. Oh, I remember that. Remember the detention pond there, the guy had his garden in it?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Kept it watered well.
So, see, that's, so it's up to him to act on that.
All right.
Okay, number twelve, decisions, seventy-nine to eighty-one Main Street, one thirty-six Intermodal Road, and three thirty-five Palma Gussel Road. So.
Seventy-nine, eighty-one. Main Street.
For marijuana cultivation, at the Wilson Building. And, I don't know, I looked it over, I didn't see anything that laid out at me, uh, on this thing, it goes on and on.
It's got our boiler plates, and then I think we added, didn't we add something to that, Dave, that was different than, uh?
God, I remember. We were contemplating snow removal, snow, snow storage areas, but we were advised that that was not necessary, so that was not included, if that's what you're talking about.
No, I was thinking of something with the loading docks, but I can't remember, maybe it wasn't, I can't, I just know their plan was phenomenal.
Yeah, they were gonna try to hide it, and put a screen and, you know, a screen there.
They were gonna screen the transformer and stuff like that, to keep that out, that, but they said they were gonna do that, so I didn't think.
Light fixtures that are directed downward.
Yeah.
And that kinda stuff, hours of, hours of operation.
Do their hours of operation end at nine?
Yep.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Eighty to nine P M, Monday through Saturday.
All right, that's good.
So, do I have a motion to sign the decision?
So moved.
Keith, you wanna look that over and see what we typically do?
Yeah, sure, yeah, I'll take a look at it.
You can't blow down it, I don't think.
Yeah, that's okay.
Uh, second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, in favor?
Uh, hold on a second. Is that a special permit?
Yeah, but signing it, the vote's, the vote's one thing.
Yeah.
Signing it is a ministerial action.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure of, so it's just basically a, a majority vote for the signing?
Correct.
Okay, I vote aye. I just wanted to make sure, I just-
That's the final piece for them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
When they came in for a special permit, and maybe the, again, I'm probably saying too mu- you know that, but special permits is a super majority, so we need four out of five members to sign.
And if you peruse that document, you'll see why we definitely need a town planner.
Yes. There's a lot going on in there, I'm sure.
Yeah.
A lot of, um, conditions that earlier-
Let me take a look at it.
That some of them we didn't get, just because we're all part-time, I guess, we're not full-time employees, where staff, this young lad over here-
Yeah.
Has the time to go through and has the experience.
Yeah, experience.
So, it's a huge advantage to us.
It's gonna be interesting to see how things work out. For us.
Oh, yeah.
Without Dave's help.
So can I call Peter up and tell it? Peter looks and tell him you'll actually be showing up there in July, but he still has to pay you? Listen, we're going along with the school budget, we helped you out on this one.
And this is the pretzel factory.
Yep.
Oh, man, that's gonna be good.
And by the way, he's hoping that in August, this thing is gonna be ready to start functioning, and prior to them kick it into gear, we go back and take another walk through it.
See the facility, how they're-
Yeah.
It's almost like, it's almost like, uh, futuristic of, uh, God, wasn't really Charles and Heston, Soylent Green, where you start out with the pieces, it grows, and grows, and grows, and when it's finalized, it goes into the, uh, I guess packaging facility.
Yeah, yeah.
And then that goes to, out to trucking, where they'll take it out and take it to a distribution facility, so, it's impressive, all computerized, almost no staff there.
Really?
Everything's run by a, a control modules, and then basically they have security and a few maintenance people, and that's it.
Yeah.
So it's not like hundreds of employees, it's just gonna be few, but still.
Okay, do I have a motion to sign the, uh, home occupancy?
So moved.
Second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does he have a name for that business, the pretzel business, or is it?
Thank you. Yeah, it's called Baked All Day.
Ooh, thanks to-
Baked All Day.
Yeah, um, they have a Facebook page, they had their first event at the Townwide Yardsdale last weekend, they're right in front of Town Hall.
Oh, neat.
Yeah.
Is he gonna bring up free samples up to?
I don't know, but that would be nice.
No, but he, at least it'll be available for, uh, the summer, Fourth of July, for, uh- Tents, your tents and pretzels? They work out a deal there.
I'll look through that one, too. It's gonna be roughly the same.
Same one, yeah.
Yep.
And we have a special permit decision for an estate lot at three thirty-five Palma Gussel Road, which they're actively clearing at this point.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor?
All right.
I am so pleased for, for that, you know, that, the way it was, uh, laid out.
Yeah. I don't believe there was any map in here, but in the center section of it, of this, uh, let's say ten fifteen acre lot, or it might have been bigger than that.
Yeah, I think that's fifteen acres.
Yeah, it's gonna be one house in the middle, houses on the outside, but in most of the acres. Yeah. If you wanna look at that one, too.
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah, these are detail, these are-
Yeah, that was, Keith, that was a huge piece of the puzzle that Dave brought to the table, that we didn't always have, we had a boiler plate, but it really wasn't as detailed, and-
Yeah, this goes along by the line.
Dave helped us refine that.
Yeah.
And truly for the applicant, too, because then there's no-
It's protection in both directions.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Good for him, that's really cool.
I wrote subdivisions when I first came on, the conditions was just written on the plan, a copy of the plan, and that was it.
Yeah.
But there was not even, there was no document.
Julian said, they're counting more books now to-
Yeah.
The registry of deeds.
Just to let you know, on the next one here, the, the night before the town meeting, I, I had a dream about that little handheld-
Other clicker.
Clicker. And, um, I, I talked to Randy, and Randy says, you better talk to somebody else, so I talked to Anita when I came in. What happens to all that data, because my name is on that, on that clicker?
Yeah.
I says, does that get sent anyplace, or what, you know, how do you know? And she says, it is dumped, at the end of the meeting, once the meeting, they delete it, and I says, well, I hope so, because, you know, I was just getting so nervous.
Well, that's a good point, Dick, because that can be given to people and, or given to data mining groups, and, uh, they could figure out that this person votes this way, and so therefore we have to-
Yeah.
The thing is, attaching a name to each one of those clickers is not required.
Oh.
It is a town thing, was, I think Anita was saying today at our bylaw meeting, that Wes Boilston has abandoned that idea, they're just being very, very secure to make sure they get all of the clickers back at the end of the town meeting.
Wow.
You know, 'cause they're, I guess they're pretty expensive to replace.
And you assign one out, kinda when you register, when you walk in, so.
Yes.
Yeah, Wes Boilston is not doing that.
They just hand them to anyone.
They're not attaching a name to anything.
Well, I think the town meeting went really well, and like I said, Dave's preparation, and, uh, Maryland's, um, bylaw subcommittee prepping that, um, home occupancy, and Dave's technical updates was, uh, well done, and, uh, man, I, I can't remember the last time that we didn't have fifty million questions, there was, I think there was maybe one, if that, maybe none, I can't remember, on the amendments, or the warrants for the, uh, two zoning bylaws. There was one.
Yep, just one.
There was just one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, that's phenomenal. Yes. So Dave, put yourself in for a raise, tell Austin to move.
Yeah, like I say, town, town meeting, and like I say, I was really kinda surprised at the override, not, not so much that it passed, but the margin was passed.
I kinda figured it was gonna be that way, soon as I saw all those people, I figured that school has already stepped in.
So, anyway, we get to keep our money.
Yes, forty-one thousand goes back into the coffers.
Yeah.
Do we have to reverse that? Do we have to reverse that? Or was that, did I make that contingent upon?
Contingent on the override.
Okay. Thanks to me, I couldn't remember. I was like, uh-oh.
Okay, last item on the agenda, open meeting law complaint. So we do have a correspondence from Lauren Goldberg on this thing, and I think, I'm just going to read out kind of the first part of this thing, which is instructions to us on how to handle this. First bullet says, to acknowledge receipt of the April 24th, 2023 complaint from Mr. Jarvie, which we already have done, actually. In the eighth of the chair distributed the complaint to the planning board members and scheduled an emergency town meeting, thinking it had a limited time to meet and respond. We never did have the emergency meeting. But I did definitely forward that complaint to all of you.
Yes.
And Mr. Chair, just to cut in on that for a second, so the item was put on the agenda of a regularly scheduled planning board meeting within the 48 hours.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because it was unanticipated business that was believed to be important and needed to be acted on immediately.
And then it says, briefly recount the substance of the April 25th, uh, discussion, and offer the other board members the opportunity to speak. I guess, I don't know, my, my take on it basically was, we, we read the complaint, uh, we decided, oh, we did come to a realization that we had to formulate a response to the complaint, and that we did need to contact town council for some advice on that, and the town council and town administrator for that matter.
Yep, and you put Dave in charge of putting that all together, and working with town council and yourself, and town administrator to get that resolved.
So, um, and I think that was pretty much the end of, I, I don't, I don't remember any prolonged discussion on it, really.
No, not really.
I guess I will make a motion. Uh, and it's six different parts to my motion, so apologize if I'm long-winded, which is usual, but that's me. First part of my motion is, the board denies that it has violated the open meeting law as alleged by Mr. Jarvie in the complaint. Second item, the matter of whether an elected official attends meetings is not a matter in which the board has any jurisdiction, as it cannot take any action to require a member to do or not to do something, so not, so not an open meeting law issue. Third one, even if an open meeting law issue, the bulk of the March 21st to 29th text chain relating to the scheduling matters not required to be discussed at an open meeting. The March 29th, 2023 email sent by the chair to Mr. Jarvie was limited in nature and in direct response to an email from Mr. Jarvie sharing his concerns about the board members not being willing to meet with him in person or by telephone for private conversations. Fifth one, to add to the minutes of the May 9th, 2023, 2023 meeting, the March 21st through March 29th email chain, as well as the draft minutes of April 25th, 2023 meeting to discuss the same, and authorize the town administrator or.
That's the next.
Oh, next one, or, and authorize the town administrator or town planner to finalize and send a response, a response to the complaint consistent with the board's findings. That's my motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, the only discussion I have is that basically this other sheet is what Austin says we will file with the Attorney General.
Okay, the director, Benny Don?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The motion is adopted.
Do we need to send that motion approved back to Austin, or at least?
I'll make him aware of what happened tonight in the morning.
It'll be reflected in our minutes.
In the minutes, yeah.
Yep, okay, good enough.
And.
Anybody out here? We do a, I don't know who Heidi and iPhone is, but it doesn't hurt to ask if anybody had any comments.
Do you have any comments from the public out there, over Zoom?
It's Leah, I don't have anything. Welcome, Keith, and thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Leah.
All right.
Thanks, Leah.
With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
At eight, five?
Yep, eight, five. Is there any discussion?
Rush.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.
Excellent.